Okay, I will now recess this regular Grand County Commission meeting and we will move to our Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Board Meeting. All present are the aforementioned people at the start of the Grand County Commission meeting. We will go to citizens to be heard for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Board Meeting. Just comment on Thompson Springs. Anyone on YouTube comment? Okay, looks like there's no public comment. We will move on to approval of meeting minutes for the Thompson Springs meetings from October 18th and November 15th.
Move to accept the minutes of the two meetings.
Thanks, Mary. Motion by Commissioner McGinn. Second by Commissioner Walker. All in favor of approval of meeting minutes, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Onto ratification of payment of bills. Total bills and the amount of $1,277.41. Total payroll and the amount of $1,646.88. Total bills and payroll and the amount of $2,924.29.
So moved.
Thank you, Trish. Okay, motion by Commissioner Hadeen, second by Commissioner Walker, all in favor of approval of bills and payroll. And the motion passes unanimously. We are on to, it looks like Chief's report, and Chief Markham is with us on Zoom. Chief Markham, welcome.
Thank you. How you doing?
Good.
Recent incidents. On 11/18, there was a single vehicle rollover on I-70 resulting in a fatality. And then on the 25th, there's a vehicle fire on Highway 191 at mile marker 149, a truck on fire. And I wasn't directly involved in either of those, but the fatality, there wasn't much to do. And then the vehicle fire, Moab Valley Fire Department responded to what they were in. They were in Thompson Springs traditional response area. I did find out just a couple of days ago, I received funding from Utah Communication Authority for our 800 megahertz radios, which is kind of the new radio system throughout the state. So we got four radios at 10% of what they normally cost. So that was, that was a great deal. Appreciate that funding. The new extrication tools that I talked about at our last meeting, they have been put into service, haven't been used in the field yet, but it's just a matter of time. So I'm really happy and feel good about having those here. As far as training goes, you know, ongoing regular training. And then I did enroll in the UFR, the Utah Fire Rescue Academy Winter Fire School in January. That's always a great yearly event. And the only other thing really is I just continue to struggle with the furnaces in the building. The repair person has come multiple, multiple times and we're still having issues. So I'm working that out, but trying to stay warm here.
Alright. Thanks, Mark. Stay warm. Thank you. We are on to public hearings and action items. We have a public hearing and approval of amended 2022 budget and the tentative 2023 budget. Chris Baird, Strategic Development Director.
Alright, so this is more or less the same budget you saw when we approved the budget. With one exception, we had to add $8,000 to the 2022 budget for the purchase of extrication. But other than that, it's the same as the tentative budget. Got the 8.7% total also for the fire chief. In your agenda summary, there's a list of some of the expected equipment purchases for next year. It's fairly simple budget. In this case, it's a public hearing and suggested approval of the 2022 amended budget, the tentative 2023 budget, drafted resolution for you.
Okay.
To consider.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Just procedurally, can we just go into a vote and discussion on the budget? Or do I have to open the public meeting first?
Do the public hearing first.
Okay.
And then, then somebody can just back the motion to approve.
Okay, great.
Thompson doesn't have any policy requirement that we made.
On the public hearing. Okay, I will open this public hearing on the amended 2022 Thompson Special Service Fire District Budget and the tentative 2023 budget. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment on that at this time? And anyone on Zoom who would care to comment on the Thompson Special Service Fire District budget? Alright, I don't see anybody who cares to comment on that. Alright, I will close this public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the 2022 amended budget and the 2023 budget for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone care to second? Alright, Evan. A motion by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Clapper. Any discussion of the Thompson budgets, both the amended 2022 and the tentative 2023? Thanks for your work on this, Chris. Yeah, it looks relatively simple and yeah. And Chief Markham, you approve?
Yes, I do.
Alright. Thanks. Alright, it looks like we don't have any more discussion on that. So I'll call for a vote of the motion. All those in favor of approving the Thompson budget, raise your hand. And the motion passes seven to nothing. Alright, thank you, Chris. And that is the end of our Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District agenda. So I will close this regular meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. And I will reconvene our regular commission meeting. All those previously present are still present. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We've got Sarah now too, sorry.
Alright, citizens to be heard. We will do a regular citizens to be heard. You have three minutes to speak. If you have anything you would like to say, please come forward to the table and speak into the microphone, state your name and, and speak. Do I have anyone here in the chamber who would like to come forward as a citizen to be heard today? Looks like we don't have anyone here in the chambers. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make a statement? Any citizens to be heard? Please raise your hand or unmute your mic. Alright, it looks like we have no citizens to be heard. We will have another citizens to be heard session at six o'clock during our regular meeting. Alright, we will now move forward with our first presentation. Our first presentation. Okay. Our first presentation is an appreciation of public service. It is a great tradition of the Grand County Commission to show appreciation for outgoing electeds. At the last meeting of their, of the year, their last meeting is electeds, and I certainly wanted to continue that tradition as we have a fine group of really quality folks leaving at this time. People who did great, great public service for Grand County. I've only worked with you all for, for two years or less, but I so appreciate your hard work and dedication as electeds and sheriff and attorney. And wish you all great, good luck back in civilian life. We're gonna, we're gonna do an individual thing for each of you, but I am going to start with, with Clerk Wytke in this because when you're not leaving for your time as a commissioner, because when you, when you left the commission, I was, I was thrown into the commission chairmanship position. It was, it was a surprising turn of events for me. I had a freshly broken back at the time and I was, I was a bit of a deer in the headlights and didn't get a chance to, to honor you as we should have. But Gabe, it was, it was great to serve with you for a year plus on the commission. I didn't, I didn't know you when I came on, but I so appreciated some of the conversations that we had and especially your thoughtful approach to doing the tough issues as a commissioner. And your willingness to step up and lead in your, in your couple of months as chair. And I think the county is lucky to have you as clerk. So, so thank you so much and definitely appreciate your time as commissioner and your, and your leadership. Yeah, absolutely. Alright, Trish, yeah?
That'd be great. Okay, and Mary, you have the back. So I want to thank Josie for taking time out of your life to serve your community. I know how much you care about this community and your intelligence and your dedication and your ability to look at every issue in a balanced manner is highly appreciated. So thank you so much. I hope you'll consider public service in the future. So, thank you so much.
Alright, Kevin.
Okay, I'm, I'm not very good at these sorts of things, but but fortunately I was told to keep it very short. So I'm, I want to discuss my appreciation for Sarah. I think she's very smart and on top of things and it's always good to discuss with her. And I think she's also very hardworking and evidence for this is, you know, sometimes our packages go to like six or 800 pages long. And if I were to think of a commissioner who's the most likely to have read some obscure, you know, obscure document in the middle of the packet and actually find some problem with a paragraph or say we should do things a little bit different, I think Sarah would come out ahead in that rating. So thanks, Sarah, for all the hard work and your judgment.
Thank you, Sarah. Mary?
I have the honor of thanking Steve White for his 12 years of dedication to this county. He's given his time during the day, during the night, at times 24/7, 24/7 during some of our most challenging situations. And it's greatly appreciated. It's not a job, it's vocation and you've, you've handled it with honor and I really appreciate it. And I think about when you started, 2010, you were, you were dealing with 2 million, I mean, 1 million tourists that came through. Now we're dealing with two. You're a first, you're a fifth class sheriff working in a fifth class county handling the population of a first class county. That could only happen if with your dedication, your knowledge and your professionalism. You will be missed and will be remembered for a long, long time. We have posters of you all over town. So thank you very, very much. Thank you so much.
Alright, and last but absolutely not least, Evan?
I've got Chrissy. I'm not quite as eloquent. I'm gonna try not to get choked up, but thank you for being such an important part of our team the last few years. Great leaders like yourself impact the whole community and it's obvious you've made a lot of positive changes. I know it's not easy and your fearlessness has guided us through some challenging moments. We'll miss you dearly and I'll personally gonna miss seeing you around here. So I wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
And, and thank you so much for all the help you've given us the last couple of years. It's been, it's been priceless. Absolutely. We'll really, really miss you.
Your willingness to answer the phone, to call us, even on the weekends when we ask you has always been so, such a breath of fresh air. I will really, really miss you.
Ah, okay, so I need to postpone that.
Let's move the budget.
Okay. There's a request to move the budget item forward if someone would care to make a motion to do so. The next
Presentation setup, but my agenda, my action items are
Okay. So that was the, so item eight is what you're right. Okay, so we, we have to do that before her presentation?
No.
Ah, gotcha. Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. I totally misunderstood you. Yeah, okay. Right, okay. Got it, got it. Thanks. Okay, then we will move on to our next presentation and our presentation is Grand County Years of Service Acknowledgements. Renee Baker, Personnel Services.
Great. And so every year we get to acknowledge those employees who have given us some years of service within the county. I generally do those at the five-year milestones, so five, 10, 15, 20. We have all the way up to 45 this year, so I will hop in. A lot of the comments made here by the supervisors, they've all gotten our certificates and their pins and will do something within their departments as well. I just wanted to shout out to all of our employees. Thank you for your effort in making Grand County a success, successful and terrific place to work. This year was faced with new challenges and we are thankful for your dedication and hard work this year. In the building inspector, Cole Cloward is our building inspector. He's had five years, started in 2017. Bill noted Cole has been a great addition to the building department team and we look forward to many more years and continued growth from Cole. In the clerk auditor's office, we have in two exciting milestones, but also one that I'm deeply sad about myself. Christina Backus with five years as deputy clerk auditor, Jana Kyle is 10 years and Jana Smith with 18 years retiring this year. Gabe added his comments in there.
Well, yeah, I mean, as you can see with Jana Smith leaving, she's very much the mother hen of the, of the clerk's office, but as you can see, we're lucky enough to have a lot of veteran makeup in our office yet with Jana Kyle and Christina. And so, you know, I think with Jana Smith, her calm demeanor and stabilizing presence will, will certainly be missed. But I think, like I said before, with the veteran presence that we still do have, and we've learned a lot from Jana Smith, and I think we're gonna take that spirit that she brought to the clerk's office and keep that, keep that alive. And, and Jana Kyle, many, just, just as with Jana Smith, people know the Janas and Jana Kyle in particular being the first one usually up at the window. So just thought from that alone and specifically specializing with business licenses and marriage licenses, I think she could easily be considered institution in this building with her, her smile behind the window. And, and Christie Backus, she's such a jack of all trades and really versatile and just a friend to many throughout the building and really lucky to have her as well. So yeah, I'm blessed to have an awesome staff within a great building. Thanks.
Out of the Grand Center, we have Brooke Bronx with 15 years of service. Brooke is our kitchen manager for the seniors and she's really taken over that role and taken on a big, big deal, serving all of our seniors for the last 15 years. Justice Court, we have Marcia Humphries, who's been there for five years. She transitioned from the clerk's office at the beginning of her career with the county and is doing great things within the justice court. Debbie Lawley retired this year in October with 14 years of service. From the library, Tom Sproul has 15 years of service. Carrie noted Tom provides excellent customer service and often takes time to help patrons with elaborate reference questions or technical needs. Many patrons seek him out specifically when visiting the library. In our maintenance department, Leo DeTilli and Daryl Rowe both have five years of experience, or five years of service within the county, giving us lots of keeping our lights on for us. The road department, Bud often, every time I see him, asks me if I know who has worked the longest in the county. And I think at this point it is Bud with 45 years of service.
Wow.
And Charlie Ross with five years this year. The road team works hard. They have a great professionalism and attention to detail. Their pride and their work makes their tough jobs look easy. San Flats, Matt Olding has five years this year. Andrea noted, just to thank Matt for his wonderful contributions, including his friendliness and welcoming attitude to visitors and staff. His backcountry patrols and trail worker and his indispensable assistance with the five tips for an offset and go app adventure video and the fifth year's of slick lock document. In search and rescue, we're, we're lucky to have such an abundant and helpful, almost volunteer search and rescue team. Frank with 30 years, Nancy with 25, Noddy with 10 and Brett and Aaron with five years. And I think Steve is still hanging out. I'll let him add to the sheriff's office. There's some great experience within the sheriff's office. Kurt with 40 years, Al with 15, Shan with 10 this year, Micah and Landon with five.
Yeah, I just, it's kind of like what Mary said, we're dealing with two million people every year.
You two won't hear you.
Thanks, Steve.
Right, you know, with the entire staff, we deal with over two million people a year, like what you said, they do, they do it with professionalism, they do it with compassion. And they deal with everything from a theft to the deceased. And like you say, they're totally professional and I just want to thank them. You see it from 30, from 40 years on down to five. There's just, I just want to thank them for what they do and how they do it.
Great.
Because I want to thank you for your 30 years of experience to Grand County. And Daryl's 12 years, Daryl retiring in January.
I couldn't do without Daryl. He's my right-hand man and he's, we still agree to go play golf once in a while, so. But yeah, he's, he's been, if I have to be out of town, I mean, he covers everything. He's right there as if I was there, so.
Thank you all and thanks to everybody.
Alright, thank you and thanks to all the great employees at Grand County and their dedication and service. Thanks, Renee. Alright, we are on to our next presentation, presentation on 2021 Grand County Internal Audit Committee Report and Fraud Risk Assessment. Cody Dieter, EFG Consulting and Clerk Auditor Gabriel Wytke. Dave?
I'll let Cody take it away. If you want to share your screen with the report or if you want us to put it up on our end. Probably if you could share your screen, I think that that would be preferable.
I'll do that.
Thank you. Awesome.
Can you hear me okay, everyone?
We can hear you. Yeah.
Excellent. I appreciate the time to be with, with all of you. It's always great to be back in Southern Utah, even if it's only virtually. For those who don't know, I grew up in LaSalle, the big city of LaSalle across the mountain. So it's, it's good to be with you. Quickly, just to review the 2022 internal audit with you. You've got a great county, very impressed with the professionalism. My role is to help the various departments improve. The focus on the last two years has really been focusing on the financial aspect of the county to make sure that we are eliminating opportunities for fraud, tightening up areas where we can improve the financial strength of the county. In the future, we may look at other areas such as improving program efficiency and effectiveness, but to this point, we've really focused on the financial side. So I'll just share with you four areas that we looked at this year. The first was the lockdown system. This is the system that the sheriff's department uses at the jail. And there were really three things we wanted to talk about there. One is a lack of training on the lockdown system. I think that's an area where the, the staff could, would really benefit from having the vendor of lockdown come out and do training for all personnel so they could improve their understanding of that lockdown system. The second area is in terms of written policy. They have great written policies, just need to make a few updates to match the cash policy that, to the cash policy of, on the written policy to improve some, so the way money is stashed and used there. The third is reconciliation. There are accounts that where money is received by the jail and is still sitting in accounts that needs to be dispersed to either the county or the state, and those are listed here. And so those are areas where reconciliation just needs to be done and money needs to be sent. So no areas where we felt like there's any major risk of fraud, just some cleanup that could be done there to improve the way in which the jail works, but really seems like things are going well at the jail. The next area is the Grand Center. A wonderful, warm and welcoming staff at the Grand Center doing a really a great job of providing a service to the seniors in the community. We did notice that there are some areas where they can improve and eliminate potential for fraud. And the biggest area would be to provide some type of receiving or reconciliation when money comes in. It doesn't appear that there has ever been fraud or that there is something that raised our attention that fraud is occurring, but eliminating that opportunity is always something we want to do. Right now, if any money comes in, it's considered a donation in most cases, other than like the vending machines. But for example, lunch and home delivered meals, those are all considered donations. There's not a set amount. So when money does come in, there's not a way to necessarily track what has come in. So when money is sent to the clerk auditor's office, there's a way to reconcile that the appropriate amount of cash is actually in the cash box and is then delivered to the clerk auditor's office. So we suggest a policy that would have a, some type of recording so that when money is counted, there is a reconciliation to go back to to make sure everything is there. So that would be the area where we'd suggest improvement could be made. But cash is always stored in a locked box. It's, it's always locked in, in Jordy's office. She and Chris are the only ones who have access to that, to her office. So I think it's, it's good, just some improvement there would be beneficial. The third area is payroll. I sat down with Renee and Angie and reviewed the payroll process and kudos to them for having a very efficient and tight process to get payroll. As you know, that is a huge expense. A lot of money goes through payroll. And it's an area where the process, which you can read this at your, at your leisure. It, many checks and balances would be extremely challenging for anyone to commit fraud in this payroll system. The only finding we had, and it's not necessarily a finding, it was self-reported from Renee and Angie, is that they're moving from using Google Sheets to Casell to eliminate duplications of information that's put into the accounts manually from Google Sheets to Casell. And that would eliminate human error as well as just create some efficiency so you don't have to type it in twice. So that'd be the third, third area that we reviewed. The fourth would be cash receiving and safekeeping. The clerk auditor's office is is staffed with highly competent individuals, very passionate and professional. They, there was an incident where $400 specifically was lost for $100 bills was counted one night and was, couldn't be found in their office the next day. In the grand scheme of things, $400 in your budget is, is very miniscule, but the fact that it happened caused the, the staff and elected officials in that office to be very upset and concerned. And so we came up with several ways to ensure that that doesn't happen in the future. And the majority of that relates to the vault and ensuring that there's clear understanding of who can and can't go in the vault. And specifically, the, the hope is to install a camera in the vault so that if there's ever an incident where cash were to be missing again, it would be visible. We'd be able to go in and see that footage and see who was in there and what happened. So that, those are some areas that there, and these other suggestions to help tighten up so that something like that doesn't happen again. And then finally, some areas to review next year. These are other areas where cash is receipted that we would like to go and look at their policies and procedures. Justice Court, the library, the old Spanish Trail Arena and the airport. So those will be the focus areas next year and, and including any others that may come from the commission or staff. So that is my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have. So that is my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Cody. Does anyone have a question for Cody?
I appreciate your work and the very, you know, I think this is a great process. I'm glad we're, as a county, we're choosing to do it.
Yeah, I would second that. Thanks, Cody, for your attentiveness and your ability to listen and help us constantly improve, which is certainly one of my goals as an elected official.
Thank you all.
Yeah, great. Appreciate it, and we'll see you next year, I assume.
Sounds good. Thanks, everyone.
All right. All right, and sort of as, on the similar thread, sort of as a, an accompaniment to that item, I just wanted to quickly present, I included in the, in the packets a fraud or risk assessment, which is a, it's a requirement by the state auditor's office. It's pretty recently, within the past couple of years, been implemented. And there's, there's a lot of talk amongst the auditors in the state and our own internal auditor from Larson about the improvements that could be made to this process, but nonetheless, I've completed it for, for your display and for the public. It, it's a self-assessment, but I am able to determine, to determine that we are a low risk from a, from a fraud standpoint here at Grand County. Some of the, our areas of improvement, we did lose a clerk deputy that had, that had completed accounting, an accounting degree. Thankfully, the, the person that we were able to hire in that position is in the process of, of receiving their accounting degree with the help of the county education benefit. So I think that that's a great testament to that benefit that exists in the county, so that we can maintain the, the professional credentials to be able to do the, the job to the best of our ability. And then also, you know, just as far, you know, just piggybacking off of the internal audit committee review and just actionable steps that we can take, and now that I will be looking to take, especially within the next six months, are just identifying those training opportunities. And then a, a, a big one that has been on this broad risk assessment for at least one year prior is a cash receiving, a written policy for cash receiving and deposits, which is something that I'll definitely focus on and make sure that it doesn't end up on this assessment again for next year. And I think that is really all, all I would have to say about that at the moment. Are there, I would field any questions, if anyone had any. Questions for Gabe? Thanks for going through all that, Gabe, and it's, yeah, it's encouraging to know that our fraud risk is very low. It's actually not very low, it's low, but.
Yeah, I liked, I liked on the assessment how you explained why and such that we got the points we got. I appreciated that.
Yeah.
The last page was real, real interesting.
And if anyone out there does want to see this, it is in the commission agenda for today. You could peruse it online. All right, any other questions for Gabe? Thank you. We do not have any department or agency reports today, so we will move on to approval of minutes from the December sixth, 2022 regular Grand County Commission meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from December sixth, 2020, to Grand County Commission regular meeting.
Thanks, Mary.
I'll, I'll second.
All right. Motion to approve by Commissioner McGinn and second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on the minutes? And, and thanks, Gabe. I, I read through all the comments, and I think you captured, impressive capturing everyone's names. All right, we'll call for a vote on the approval. All those in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Onto ratification of bills. Total county bills in the amount of $725,626.12. Total payroll in the amount of $317,773.42, for a total bills and payroll of $1,043,399.54.
All right, I'll move to approve the bills as per second.
Thanks, Kevin. Second, okay. I have a motion to approve the bills by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner McGinn. Any discussion of bills at this time? Call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of bills? And the motion passes unanimously. We are on to commission member disclosures. Does anybody have something they need to disclose about any of the items on today's agenda? All right, looks like not, so we will move to general commission reports and future considerations. See, I will start with Evan. It's far end today.
Let me grab my notes just a minute.
Okay, I can move on. Kevin, are you ready?
Very much time. How did it happen? The past two weeks, there were some meetings with the BLM, and as usual, they're releasing EAs, and the most recent one is the Two Rivers Camp EA, so I'm just bringing that to you all's attention. And I think, I think that's all I have to report this time.
Great. I'll go to Josie.
I don't have very much. I think there was a housing task force meeting somewhere in there, but that may have been before our last meeting. Though I had a Housing Authority, a Southern Utah meeting, and it sounds like the housing fair was a success, the, the first of many, hopefully. And a lot of good discussion has come out of that initial round. For H苏, they are just continuing to do all of the amazing work that they're doing, all of the Arroyo Crossing. And hopefully for years to come, they are just setting their sights on hopefully moving into townhome tracks and also further land acquisition, which is continuing the work that they're doing, among, as well as all of the other programs they have. It sounds like staff-wise, they are losing some folks, but are generally very well-staffed and, and has been singing high praises for everyone who's working there. He's also started a, signed up for a training program called Flourish First for professional development, and it sounds like people are just really interested in getting cross-trained on policy things, even if they're just doing construction stuff primarily, and everybody's just getting really burst on all the ins and outs of everything H苏 is doing. And I think just always insight on the housing front, for instance, Section Eight vouchers, there are vouchers available, but people are looking for housing matches, and that tends to be more of the, you know, challenge is, is finding those actual housing matches on the ground. So I think, as always, it's great to see housing being created, and it is still an issue. And other than that, other than that, I would just like to thank everybody for having me here for the last several months. It has been quite an education, and I look forward to being involved in whatever way I can in the future and seeing how things progress. So, thanks, everybody.
Awesome. Thanks, Josie. Kevin, you ready?
Sure. I met with the Sand Flat, Sand Flat Stewardship Committee. I think the big thing for this body there was that they were discussing weighing in to the planning portal. I don't want to misspeak. It's not the EA, but the regarding nighttime closures at Sand Flats. The BLM took the recommendation to, to look into that, and so there's some, the stewardship committee plans on weighing in on that, and they're still working on some verbiage and such. We got a nice year-end summary from Andrea as well, just to kind of, a lot with numbers and approving the budget for next year. Met with the Health, the Canyonlands Health District as well. That also was finalizing a budget and adopting that for next year. And some board positions there, scheduling meetings for next year, et cetera. And then I met with the Cemetery District, and they also held a public hearing regarding the 2023 budget and adopted that. We discussed some, some capital projects for next year and the makeup of the board as well. And the EMS Special Service District did not meet today. They had a special meeting regarding the budget earlier, and so that next regular scheduled meeting will be January 10th, and that's all I got. Oh, they did, EMS did have a holiday party on the eighth.
All right. Sure, it was fun. Trish?
All right, so, so on the evening of the seventh, I went up to Green River to the Southeastern Region Division Wildlife Meeting to talk about the bear management plan and modifications to that, and I don't really know what to say. Didn't, wasn't super lucrative, but I went, and so we'll kind of see where it goes. It's still neat, it will go to the Wildlife Board at the beginning of January, and so, you know, if people want to make public comment, comment directly to the Wildlife Board, that is recommended. The Planning Commission, we just kind of talked, we just, really just general discussions about future workforce housing solutions, the tools that are in our toolbox, HDHO, ADO, deed restriction for active employment, set-asides for workforce housing, just a lot of things, and how to prioritize and set those up for the future. We looked at the Nexus Study and feasibility analysis, and basically he stated that the possible build-out for this valley was 12,000 units, which is a big number. But when we consider water, that basically gets cut in half, and so I think it'd be nice to, to look at that with a little bit more, just, just a little clearer in the future. And then just the priorities of 2023, really what we're looking at is ADUs, the Southern 191 Corridor, tiny house communities, and water within the land use code. I went to the Grand County Conservation District. We talked a little bit about city and county and working collaborative, collaboratively regarding flooding, flooding and drainages. I think that's something that has, is being done, so just kind of continuing that outreach and education. The Grand County Small-Scale Agricultural Workshop is coming up at the end of February. That's always a great opportunity to meet specifically with Department of Ag, USU Extension, and just learn about, a little bit more about small-scale ag. I met with the Rec District. We talked a little bit about pickleball, Mary. As, as Chris mentioned, they're rewriting the grant, not only for pickleball courts out at Osta, but also encompassing a playground out there, so that's kind of cool. Mineral lease monies are up, or were up for 2022, as you probably felt at the gas pump. And so they're doing fairly well as far as budgeting. And then I went to Grand Water and Sewer, and again, the budget looks really good for the past and the future. Kins Lake looks awesome, 188% of 2021, and 383% of 2020. So the lake is just, has been full and, and has maintained that. It's currently at 1,700 acre feet, which is really, really high and, and really good. Soil moisture at 9,500 feet is 41%, and so that's actually, looks really good compared to past years, the last couple of years.
Heard there are, I was getting on Kins Lake already, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
In the inlet, I, I saw him.
Nice. Can't wait to get out there. All right, thank you, Trish. Sarah?
I don't have much to report. I attended two, kind of like, just regular business meetings for the mosquito abatement district and the weeds department. And then this is my last meeting, so I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to serve with you, and I've learned a lot about the inner workings of government, and yeah, I think I've gained a lot of varied experience that will serve me in some way moving forward, but I've been really grateful to have this opportunity, and thank you all, and thank you, yeah, especially the staff and Christina and folks to help move through a lot of these important issues that we're working on, and I've been grateful to be a part of this commission, one that has such momentum to actually get things done. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mary?
And I, I do want to thank both of you. I was so impressed that you came on, failed a position, a vacancy, and you jumped in, and your dedication to coming to meetings prepared and ready has been honorable. So thank you both. And it was fun having a female majority for the first time in the commission's history, so you can. And I checked it. I, I went back and looked, to make sure. It's historical. It's historical. We'll, we'll go down. Okay, I had, I've been busy. Had a really good USU Advisory Council meeting up at their beautiful building, and learned that they've been working really closely with Grand County School District to coordinate better activities, so that the kids start younger thinking about going to college. Going into the school itself, and then they're starting to have fourth grade field trips. So they're bringing the fourth graders up to the campus and showing them what they can do, and, you know, getting them excited that there is that opportunity, and then they're also doing eighth grade field trips and career days. And they're just doing a lot with the high school, and try, you know, just making a presence in town, so that was great. They have the USU Technical Education Open House. On the third of March, and I'll remind you again, there's going to be two artists up there doing demonstrations and teachings, and they, there are the science books, the scientific books about the national parks that they're creating. That sounds very interesting. And then in April, it's Paint the Town Blue, and then their commencement ceremony is April 22nd. One of the ideas in our brainstorming of how to get more, you know, people aware of USU and involvement was Jason Taylor said that a lot, he loses so much of his staff to go to college, you know, when he really needs them still, but college starts, and so they leave, and so he's thinking, he wants to get his, you know, and maybe get other people to recognize that they could do their, their fall schooling in Moab, you know, and see what they need. So that, I thought that was a very good idea. I, I was pretty excited about it. And to have packets for businesses and such, and instead advising students to stay. Okay, so that was that. I met with the Arts Council on the 13th, and they talked, we talked a lot about how art can be an economic development driver, and when I first got on the commission, I was really interested in that. And you need eight galleries to be considered a, a town that will attract people to come just for art. You know, that, that's one of their main goals, and we have, I think, three in town now. And we were talking about other ways of perhaps of getting like hotel gift shops to have local artists in there and things like that, so we can get our local artist material shown more places and that more people, visitors, will see it. So it was, it was a good one. And then we had the tile ceremony for the Omtre project. This is how much we have left. One, two, three. This, when, when this started, I don't know how many of you remember, this whole thing was green, and this was completely blue. And now there is only one, two, three million tons left, and we have been moving a million tons a year since we started on the funding increases, so if, you know, no rock closure, no, I mean, rock falls or just off the railroad, and they didn't have a railroad strike, which was good for us. We should see the tile will be gone in three years, but it will, it take a while after. So go online and do the survey on what you want that site to look like. So that was fun and exciting. Oh, we had, that same day was a travel council meeting. We interviewed two people. There's going to be more interviews in, for the board vacancies. There'll be more interviews in January, and then we'll, they'll vote on who, to, who, who will serve on the travel council board. Loves gave a really good presentation of their fall, what they did, you know, when they came and their stuff, and how it's really helped, you know, where they can see how many people click on. I, it's almost spooky when they talk about what they know you're doing. I'm just going, I don't know. But how they don't know how many people have looked, and they've had. But how they don't know how many people have looked and they've had millions of hits. And interesting enough, the, how many of you've looked at the new ads?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. The one with the low middle?
Right, right. Oh, monster.
Little monster looks like an alien or spaceship is the one that gets the most hits. And then they go from there and they can follow and see that, that, then they go and book, start to book motels and hotels and all right, right? So I just thought that was interesting that that was the one.
The fairy shrimp?
The fairy shrimp was the one that, I think they've seen our scenery so much that they kind of.
Right, that was, yeah.
An alien in Grand County. Check that out. And so, and they, you know, as we probably all know instinctually, that the national parks is the greatest driver of our markets. And they're making big strides in Chicago's flight market. Uh, I'm gonna skip a lot of it. There's, it was, it was a big meeting, went on for a long time. See if there's anything else. Anyway, they're, you're working with Expedia and such to get things done. Uh, we had a budget advisory board on the fourteenth and we interviewed some candidates for, to fill out the board positions. And we have other candidates that are asking. So thi- this will be on the regular agenda when we go to, uh, to, uh, vote on the board members for these two boards. Uh, and there's a big discussion on buying the software because it is fairly expensive, uh, but it will streamline applications, make it easier for people to apply for different, uh, this is a housing, excuse me. Cause you know, economic, housing is economic development. So they have this, and they're helping the housing, the trust and the H D O and, uh, the H O S U. And they're wanting to get, uh, buy software that will streamline applications for building affordable housing or getting the, uh, you know, federal government type things. And also because we're going into so much deed restricted housing, that that's, and it, and complicated deed restrictions in some ways where it's tied to, uh, employment.
Right.
So this will make it possible to make sure that the deed restrictions are being honored. So, uh, there were lots of discussion went on quite a while, but at the end, they decided the money was well worth it and they voted to put it in the budget. So that's all.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Um, I attended on the seventh, the Museum of Moab meeting, uh, where we discussed our meeting schedule for next year, which will be quarterly, um, discussion of the two thousand and twenty-three budget as well as the, uh, potential makeup of the board going forward. Uh, and also they debuted a visit, video presentation of their spirit and grit, uh, display, which you can catch at Dead Horse Point State Park, which is a, which is awesome. Yeah. And the, um, the video should be on the Museum of Moab website, which is cool. It's about a seven minute video. Um, and if you haven't gotten to that display up at, uh, Dead Horse, I attended it recently and it's, it's really cool. It's a great, it's a great display and it's really cool that the museum's kind of branching out beyond their four walls and doing a lot of work in other parts of Grand County. Um, I, on the eighth, I attended a motorized trail committee meeting, um, where we also had a discussion of the, uh, the proposed San Flats Recreation Area nighttime trail closures. Uh, some of the discussion, uh, revolved around how to, how the M T C, uh, should respond to that or, or where they would weigh in on that, um, discussion. Uh, on the twelfth, we had a new commissioner and attorney orientation. Uh, the staff did a great job of, um, educating all of us, I guess, including myself. Um, uh, I think that went really well with it, with the new electeds coming in. And thanks staff on that. Uh, on the thirteenth, uh, Trail Mix Meeting, um, discussion of how to recruit for the new regular trail maintenance days for volunteers, how to post that and get people kind of in the habit of volunteering on our local, uh, non-motorized trails. Um, also we discussed a list of priority projects for those maintenance days. Uh, we discussed a potential new trail system, the Mud Springs Trail System just south of Grand County and San Juan County, um, that San Juan County is helping with. And, uh, um, that looks like it's going to be really cool, up to twenty miles of single track down there. Um, we, on the fourteenth, I went to a Thompson Springs Water District meeting. Um, we discussed the recent contamination and the need to finalize a report to get to the, um, to get to the straight state grant people for that, pay for all the, uh, contamination, um, uh, remitigation there. Um, discussed the potential B L M Springs project and the fact that it's looking less likely that that may come on board as a potential new water source for, for Thompson. Um, and looking at other ways of maybe procuring more water in Thompson. Um, and we also talked about board member appointments. There's two board members that are up for reappointment next year there. Uh, so far they've only got one application and one, one person would definitely like to leave that Thompson board. So that's what's going on in Thompson. And that's all I have. Um, so we'll get to, uh, elected official reports. And I believe Christina, you said you didn't have anything tonight?
Yeah, I'm kind of losing.
All right.
It's been a pleasure. See you on the other side. You have to leave momentarily if my daughter's tantric, but I appreciate all of you.
All right. Thanks, Christina. Uh, Gabe?
Nothing at this time, thanks. I'm going to be also leaving, be leaving momentarily. I have to beat the storm through the pass.
Okay. It's been a good year. All right. Thank you, Gabe. Um, on to our admin, um, reports, Mallory?
Um, I've attended some of those same meetings and I also have the same plans of leaving early. So thank you all for agreeing.
Last, last meeting, last meeting of the year. Everyone's getting out of town for the weather. All right. Quinn, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Okay. Great. All right, then, uh, that's that. And we'll move on to general business action items. Um, looks like we can start with action item number, uh, two approving, and there is no action item number one, so. One was the math, right? I'm sorry. Um, approving real estate purchase contract for real property described as vacant land located in San Juan County, Utah, at the northeast corner of Spanish Valley Drive and Allen Street, parcel number zero, 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 three, nine, uh, zero, 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 D, zero to Moab Valley Healthcare Incorporated, also known as Moab Regional Hospital. Chris Baird, Strategic Development Director.
Yeah, you want to speak it off to the, do you have time to speak to the, the?
Oh, sure.
Maybe we can cover that first. Yep. Christina, negotiate with them, the deed restriction element of it, which is very simple.
So M R H submitted an offer, um, after we promoted that the county was interested in selling San Juan County parcels. Um, and then in response to that, we presented an addendum number one that integrated a workforce housing deed restriction that is based on our H D H O ordinance, plus our H D H O rules and regs, plus our lessons learned in H D H O. It is the same language and the same definition of an actively employed household that we've been working with our other ordinances throughout the year with housing. Um, so that's consistent. It does, specific to M R H, because of course M R H wants to build this housing for, uh, healthcare service workers, which I believe that the commission wants to support that. So it does define for the period that M R H owns the property, that actively employed household, uh, is satisfied by workforce, um, or eligible healthcare workers. M R H, because it's a pretty large piece. How big is it?
Twenty-one point seven, three acres.
Twenty-one point seven, three. They're already anticipating they may not need it all, once it all develop at all. So, um, we, we also discussed and negotiated with them a resale provision where if they resell undeveloped land out of this parcel, they would keep sixty percent of the net profits. We would keep forty percent, but this workforce housing restriction would be in perpetuity, which is why it's important to use our general definitions now, but yet vast M R H to do what they need to do with the property while they're, so that is what addendum number one does. Um, but then M R H has approved, um, addendum number one, but their attorney and, so they liked.
They liked.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, back to the general real estate purchase contract. So twenty-one point seven, three acre parcel of undeveloped real estate on the northeast corner of Spanish Valley Drive and Allen Street. So it's sort of, uh, cuts across the, you know, where they're portioning. Out there. It is for one point nine million. This has a, uh, six month due diligence period. So, you know, if there are any zoning concerns or other concerns, uh, well, I'll have to have the, uh, to flush those out during the six month period. So if everything works, you know, that about six months from now, we're going to have closing, but they have that due diligence period. And that, I think everything else here is just typical boilerplate, um, besides the addendum that Christina covered. Ask the answer and the questions if you have.
So is, has this been discussed in a public meeting before? Or is, is the person, this deal with M R H?
Um. Yeah, I think so.
So I, I mean, just might be worth giving some kind of overview of people who are curious what in the world's going, going on.
All right. So their, their interest is workforce housing. And as far as I know, that's.
Okay. So, so Grand, Grand County owns various parcels in San Juan County that aren't much used to us. And we were looking into disposing of some of them and this is part of that larger program. And, and so we're, we're happy that we can, that M R H is buying it and using it for workforce housing.
And so we, we also have the, uh, we'll vote across, uh, track, which is about forty acres and another, uh, four and a quarter, four and a half acres out on the highway, kitty corner to the business park. So there's three parcels that are out there, but we're only talking about the twenty-one point seven, three acre parcels.
Right. And I would, uh, I would, I would note that we got the appraised price for that.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah, right. That was the appraised price as well as, um, yeah, needed workforce housing for our hospital and the deed restriction. So it's, it sounds like a pretty good deal.
So the appraised, the appraised price was almost exactly the.
Right, right.
That's good.
I'll make a motion. I'll move to approve the real estate purchase contract and it's a addendum one for real property described as vacant land located in San Juan County, Utah, at the northeast corner of Spanish Valley Drive and Allen Street, parcel number zero, 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 three, nine, zero, 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 D, zero to Moab Valley Healthcare Incorporated with an offer reference date of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Awesome. Thanks, Evan.
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, motion by Commissioner Clapper and second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I do think that this is a win-win, uh, for our community and all around. So, um, it feels like cleaning house, but also, uh, um, actively promoting affordable housing in the valley.
Yeah. And I know hospital staff definitely needs housing, especially with the expansion over there. So it's a, it's a, yeah, win-win. Yeah. And in general, I, I think we should be cautious about disposing of land because it's, it's pretty hard to acquire new land in the valley. Um, but this does seem like a, you know, a, a good deal, especially with the, um, workforce housing requirements that, you know, go to future owners as well. So. All right. Anyone else have a comment or question? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. All right. Looks like the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris. Have a motion to move, uh, agenda item eight up, correct?
Or just by. I'll see if I rearrange these.
Ah, great. Is there anyone opposed to moving agenda item eight, uh, forward at this point? Doesn't look like it. So let's move on to that. The action item is adoption of the amended twenty twenty-two budget, the tentative twenty twenty-three budget and a proposed eight point seven percent cost of living adjustment, the COLA for all elected officials. Um, Chris?
So we had a public hearing, uh, on both the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two amended budget, the twenty twenty-three budget and the, uh, increase in salaries for elected officials, which is the eight point seven percent COLA, which is a county-wide proposal at this point. There are some, uh, attachments in your packet that go into detail on all of this stuff. I'm going to cover a few points that have changed since, uh, the tentative budget and the, uh, the public hearing. So there are a couple of big things that have changed. Uh, one is that I'm working on a two point eight, nine billion dollar grant. This is a American Rescue Plan grant, ARPA money. Uh, it's, uh, carved out in what's called the vocal assistance and tribal consistency fund grant. N A C O has been working really hard on, uh, making this grant available for eligible counties and eligible counties are predominantly those with a large amount of public lands, uh, and or tribal governments. And so it appears that we're eligible for this, uh, two point eight, nine billion. So I'm gonna, so I put that into the budget at this point. It's coming into the budget and going straight to capital projects. Uh, because, you know, that's, we don't really have time to work out how to spend it, but in the future, if this does go, go through, then, uh, we'll need to talk about it and see how we want to portion that money. We do have a lot of capital project needs, uh, in the future and next year, you know, I'd like to make it prioritize capital project needs, that's kind of what we do that. And, you know, we've also got a lot of stormwater projects that, you know, to be addressed as well. So. Um, I'm also leaving a draft of fund balance, um, in the general fund, about, I think about five hundred and twenty-nine thousand. You know, and that's a contingency really. Um, if, uh, this large two point eight, nine million dollar grant, uh, should not go through. If it does, we might, you know, end the budget to do some of it if we had to. I don't think that we'd end up drawing up fund balance because we usually under, spend our fund balance by about six to eight hundred thousand per year. So we're below that average threshold, which means we probably end up, we might end up on balance. The other big change is just refining the airport capital fund budget. That's fund fifty-six, uh, to reflect, uh, where we're at with our projects this year. And then, uh, bringing in a couple of new big proposed projects for next year, what would be, uh, taxiway design and then perimeter fencing. That's going to be combined over a million dollars and we'll have to match about nine percent of that. So I did budget to put the match in, even though both grants are not approved, they haven't come to the commission yet, it's part of the budget. And so if we do decide to move forward on it, we'll have a budget to make a batch. As I understand that the design of our current taxiway is, um, not compliant with new F A regulations. And, uh, there's a grace period for fixing that. We don't know exactly how long it's going to be, but at some point, uh, we'll have to not only design a new taxiway and, but also construct it. And so that's a big part of what is, one of these new projects is going to be, it's about eight hundred fifty thousand dollar project next year. Um, and then there's more to come after that in subsequent years, just in terms of, we have to find, we have to stand. So just refining that fund fifty-six, uh, budget, those are the two big changes since the public hearing. Uh, other than that, everything's about the same. We're still, we've got about, I don't know, forty-nine thousand, the capital billion equipment needs, but you, three and a half million for office space purchases, probably end up, uh, purchasing the interact cloud housing model that for office space next year. Uh, and just a big number of twelve million to cover any, um, real estate, San Juan County has more than we need, but you know, it's, uh, just to carve out for that. And then, um, what's left over, uh, in that budget, which is largely, uh, from the, uh, L A C T F grants that, uh, local assistance and tribal consistency fund grant, we deposited also, or is budgeted, we deposited into the, uh, capital projects, like total about three point one. Part of that is, is also predicated on moving a three hundred, the remainder of a three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar care Zach grant for the airport into the general fund and consulting and consultation with, uh, our staff, our engineers at the airport. They indicated that it would be better to spend that grant down, uh, general fund obligation says it's, if we, we'd be able to use federal money to match federal money, which is what I was thinking originally. So that three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, awesome. That three hundred and twenty nine thousand also went back into the general fund, which is gonna offset uh airport expenses next year as well, some of the capital projects. I think everything else is uh pretty much the same as the public hearing. If you have any other questions you might have about the budget.
Any questions for Chris?
So the um the cost of living is not it's not just elected officials, all all staff is getting that same eight point seven percent, and that comes from a number that social security uses, right?
Yeah, the Social Security Administration adjustment and it's based on inflation rate, inflation price index, variety of other things. So it's a standard that we tend to use for our COLA. It's obviously the biggest COLA of all, Grand County's ever done. It's one of the highest inflation rates that I've ever seen. Also, it's the same. And so you know, the the concept is to try to maintain the purchasing power of everybody's salary. Uh if you don't do, if you don't take adjustments for inflation, then it's kind of like getting a uh a cut away because your dollars aren't gonna stretch as far as they did here before. And eventually, you know, that that's uh causing retention or recruitment issues. Uh we do have a balanced budget, so it's uh we're we managed to figure that out. But the the reason why the elected officials are called out is because statute requires that we address them specifically. Public hearing, I passed any adjustments to the elected official salaries to be in order.
Great, thanks for clarifying that, Chris.
So yeah, in your packet, we've got, you suggested motion that covers all all three of these things you want, we can break them up. But there uh is a resolution amending the twenty twenty two Grand County budget and approving the twenty twenty three Grand County budget that's separately in ordinance, acting eight point seven percent cost of living adjustment for all the officials. I think it's fine to make a motion all this way.
Okay. Um I move to approve the resolution amending the twenty twenty two Grand County budget, resolution approving the twenty twenty three Grand County budget, and the ordinance enacting eight point seven percent cost of living adjustment for all elected officials.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Mary. So I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion?
Um, you know, just this has been in front of us several times before, and then in front of the Budget Advisory Commission, you know, for months before that, so there's except for what Chris just outlined, um there's really nothing new here. It's, you know, it's a little a lot of small and medium sized decisions in the budget, but we've we've gone over it pretty thoroughly, so I feel comfortable, you know, passing the budget. It's we've got in front of us.
Great, thank you. Mary?
Um, I just wanna say that I'm really glad we were able to offer the eight point seven percent cost of living, because I I I was on the commission when there hadn't been those consistencies, and it became so difficult to recruit people. Our uh staff, every department was short handed. Things couldn't run as smoothly because they were and then and so, you know, it's a lot, but it means the people aren't getting a pay cut, which was would be what would happen if we didn't do the cost of living, so I'm really glad we were able to.
Thanks, Mary. Anyone else care to comment or make a motion?
There's a motion on the table.
Ah, I'm sorry. Uh there was a motion on the table by Kevin and a second by Mary. Um it looks like there is no further discussion, so I'll call for a vote on the motion. Again, the motion was by Kevin and second by Mary. So all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes seven to nothing.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Yeah, thanks for all your your hard work on the budget, Chris. It's, yeah.
So now now you can vaguely.
Excellent. All right, we'll move on to item number three, approving the twenty twenty three pay plan Rene Baker Personal Services.
Sure, so um the the twenty twenty three pay plan uh just establishes the pay schedules for all of those in non-elected positions. It creates uh those new positions that we talked about for twenty twenty three, uh adjusts those that we also edited. And establishes the graded step chart and the pay periods and holidays. Uh I'll quickly go through what my exhibits are. Uh the position pay plan is all approved positions at their uh grade and uh salary range with that eight point seven percent COLA. This can only be changed with commission action actions. Exhibit B is the employee paid plan. This uh acts as our personal action form for the first of the year, so we can put payroll changes in. Um changes to this, additional steps may be rewarded through uh HR administrative actions throughout the year with in line with our paid policies. And the exhibit Cs are a twenty twenty three grade step chart with the eight point seven percent COLA. Uh D through F are are proposed job descriptions, the new reclassified and edited. And then exhibit G is just kind of a call out to, um there's a few, three job descriptions that we're gonna edit that were proposed positions, the county engineer. Uh and then economic development, job descriptions for those edits. Uh those will be forthcoming um. Which means additional additional time to really refine those job descriptions. So no recruitment will happen to those, and they'll come to the commission probably that second meeting in January. Uh but the positions are included at those grades in the pay plan. And then exhibit H is our scheduled pay periods and holidays.
All right, great. Any questions for Renee? Anyone care to make a motion?
Sure, um I move to approve the resolution titled repealing and replacing resolution number three three zero six and establishing a twenty twenty three pay plan effective January first, twenty twenty three.
Thanks, Kevin. And second by Mary. Yeah, uh any further discussion or or questions for Mary concerning the twenty twenty three pay plan? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Um so we will move on to item four, approving vacation accrual rollover. Also, Renee.
Great. Um the last two years due to COVID, I've come and asked individually at Jared for an increase to our vacation rollover, since we've had some some interesting times trying to schedule vacations due to COVID, and I think it's it's kind of added to the issue, but also just showing that our employees that they can carry over a larger vacation balance. Um this would adjust the the vacation balance to three hundred and twenty hours of rollover uh with a maximum payout of being two hundred hours. And if an employee were to leave um after their first year, they would get paid out that two hundred dollar, two hundred hours, or up their balance up to two hundred hours. Um they terminate in the first year, they won't be able to take any of their balance with them. Uh I put some statistics, I did some research from some other counties and found uh that the median was the three hundred and twenty hours, and the average was about two ninety two for rollover amounts. Every county has a little bit different of a policy, so I didn't want to get bogged down too much in everybody else's details and tried to offer a kind of simple solution for and that keeps coming up, so.
All right, thanks for doing all the work on that, Renee. Um any questions for Renee on the vacation accrual rollover?
Um, I move to approve the resolution titled amending the Grand County Employee Ham, same on, am I on the right one?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Amending the Grand County Employee Handbook, section eight, benefit all employees vacation, effective January first, twenty twenty three.
Thanks, Kevin.
I'll second that.
All right, uh motion on the table by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any other discussion? Evan, you look.
I was just gonna say, Renee, do you mind summarizing the uh changes that are in that resolution?
Um sure, so currently the the vacation rollover is a hun- uh hundred and sixty hours, so at the beginning of the year, uh any any employee with a balance of over a hundred and sixty hours, I take away their hours, they lose them. Um this change would be anybody with a balance over three hundred and twenty hours would lose those hours above that year to year. And then currently um our payout policy on our vacation is just all the hours that they have accrued. So if they were to leave, let's say right now with two hundred and forty hours, I would be paying them out two hundred and forty hours. This change would be I would only pay them out for two hundred hours. And then um also the additional change is that uh we added in a portion there of if they leave employment with Grand County within the first year, they would not be paid out any of their hours. Uh we don't have that currently in there, and then employees who are voluntary involuntarily terminated from Grand County would not receive a payout.
Great, thank you.
Do you know how many of these other counties had folks cashing in eight weeks of paid vacation?
I don't, there was, I was actually quite surprised at the the amount of counties that had like buyout policies and like offering buyouts to their employees when they're over a certain amount of hours, kind of somewhat encouraging them not to take their vacation and let it build up. Like the city's policy is a little bit different. The city just uh updated their policy to two hundred and forty uh rollover and I think the two hundred and forty payout, so. With the similar uh one year, no payout.
Any other questions or uh concerns? All right, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Um call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Um thanks, Renee.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Renee.
Uh we're on to item five, considering a contract to fund proposed visitor management research by Dr. Wayne Freeman of the USU Department of Environment and Society. Uh August, and Ben from Economic Development.
Ben, it's only five twenty, and you're already yawning. I know it's winter.
Did you catch him?
I I I'm with you. I am down.
Did you catch him?
Yeah, I did.
You gotta spice it up for him, so it's.
I I agree with that.
Oh my gosh, no, I love all the vacation rollovers. It's to encourage you to take vacation.
Right.
You can't cash it up.
Well, that's the problem right there. He was going to bed at who knows what time. Yeah, river time, right.
Well, uh Anna from uh the Trails Department, since you'd be available to call in and ask and answer any questions on this, there are particular Trail Ambassador phone this, but I'll just I'll just hop in and I'll just read the the quick background uh and I can answer any questions on this on this one. So um the Economic Development Department's twenty twenty two budget includes a hundred and fifty thousand for the purposes of consulting services, of which fifty thousand was originally allocated for visitor use study that had been proposed by uh Dr. Wayne Freeman, professor of environment and society at Utesi University. January, the commission approved the item as a part of the pre-authorized capital procurement list expenditures that are approved as part of this list are subject to accounted purchasing policy, but do not have to come back to the commission later in the year. However, the contract process for this improved expenditure was in victory delays, and as a result, modifications to the scope were made to account for research at the hundredth time. Um specifically that hooks around time entry this year. While the purchase was on the unauthorized list, the significant change in the scope of work requires commission approval, even though there are no changes to the contract scope. Today, uh our department is requesting that the commission approve a forty nine thousand eight hundred and thirty two dollar forty nine cent contract. Dr. Freeman and his department of research data collection, data analysis, and other direct indirect costs associated with two primary objectives, one evaluating the effectiveness of the Trail Ambassador program, and two synthesizing and providing insights from studying Grand County that addresses their behaviors impacts. Though Dr. Freeman's proposed research will be conducted predominantly in twenty twenty three, the E D D has been cleared by the Strategic Development Director, Chris Barrett, and paid for this research out of his twenty twenty budget, which has sufficient funds. Uh there's more details that I get into in the scope of work from January to now. Um any questions about that? Yeah.
Um, I move to approve a contract between Grand County and the USU Department of Environmental Environment and Society valued at forty nine thousand eight hundred and thirty two dollars and forty nine cents for visitor management research.
Thanks, Kevin. Second. All right, uh motion by Commissioner Walker and second by Commissioner McGann. Uh discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna make, I don't know what your connection is to this, but I have reached out to Dr. Friedman and Dr. Smith. Um because I I do think there's areas specifically coming out of planning and zoning that we could desperately use USU's research, and and it never, it kind of fell on it never went anywhere.
Yeah.
My um my, you know, reaching out to them, trying to get a meeting with them, so if you have that ability, have them touch base with me, please, because I think we have all kinds of needs within housing, right, as far as research and the impacts of gateway gateway communities. Um it's, yeah, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not I'm not doing a great job discussing this, but I.
Contract is a good way to get a meeting.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so if I if I if I vote for this, I wanna meet. And maybe you'll meet with me, too. That'd be great, because I I guess I do think we have desperate needs as far as research, you know, and I think it's a great way to 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 couple with USU and and, you know, individuals that are working within that realm, and I know that they do a lot of that type of research, so.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
I'm a I'm a big fan of the.
Glad you got my back.
Yeah. I'm like, I'm a big fan of the responsible recreation and the Trail Ambassador programs, and I think it's it's gonna be nice to see some good, hard uh data and research as to the effectiveness of those programs. I think I think it'll it'll prove quite effective. Yeah.
And it's good to have the data to back up your decisions and saying, we're gonna spend money on Trail Ambassadors because we have da 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 that she, you know, and and also to help us guide where where it's working and where it's not working and
Yeah.
what we can do better and uh yeah, Dr. Freeman is very capable. I'm doing the job.
Yeah, looking forward to to seeing what he comes up with, for sure. Any uh further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Um all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously.
Tell them to get in touch with me.
Tell that contracts held up, tell that. I want a meeting.
Um we're up to item six, Grand County Commission, twenty twenty three meeting schedule, and Alicia is out six. So Quinn, are you um handling this or Mallory?
I can do it.
Okay, great.
Um one thing, it was just updated in the packet, so I wanna make sure um for the public or all of you to note that it says, or it said previously March first um as the meeting date, am I getting that right? And it's actually March seventh, so that has been corrected. But um yes, this is a state requirement, so you all must approve it, and we'll also need to publish it on the public notice website as well as submitting it to the newspaper on record um for them to publish.
Awesome, thanks, Mallory. And I would note that our uh our regular first and third Tuesdays will hold for the year, except for July fifth due to the holiday July fourth being on a Tuesday. And November eighth, we'll have a meeting on a Wednesday due to uh election day in the city on uh Tuesday, November seventh. Otherwise, we'll be first and third Tuesdays. Yes, sir.
I uh move to approve the Grand County Commission twenty twenty three meeting schedule, all the change that March seventh is the date for one of them instead of March first.
Thanks, Sarah.
Second.
All right.
I only included that because when I load it, it doesn't.
All right, I have a motion by uh Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion on the meeting schedule? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Easy.
Was, all right, that passes unanimously as well. Um we're on to approving Fallen Peace Officer Trail Ride twenty twenty three, intent to apply. And I said I would uh present this um as background, the Fallen Peace Officer Trail is a long trail ride is a longstanding event held by the Utah Peace Officer Association um and put on locally uh by Officer Brody Young, um among others. Uh the event has been historically held in the spring, with the exception of this year. When it was held in November, the Utah Peace Officer Association would like to return to the spring event schedule and have their event in April of twenty twenty three. Uh having the event in April aligns with Fallen Officers' family commitments and offers more favorable weather conditions. Approval of the twenty twenty three Fallen Peace Officer Trail Ride intent to apply would allow them to proceed with a complete application and begin planning and advertising for the event. And this just came before us, I don't know, it was it was a few months ago, and we approved their November event. And I did I did check back in with uh Brody Young, who uh puts the event on, he said the uh the fall event was was very small comparatively um to past events. to past events and, and it was cold. It wasn't an ideal time for them and, and, and people are used to the, the spring event. So that is why they would prefer to go back to their, their previous event. Discussion.
I was just gonna note, you know, we, we have a new policy for special events that we want to review them quarterly, and this is outside of that quarterly meeting schedule. But I think during this initial transition period, when we're getting used to the, the new scheduling, it, it's appropriate to make, you know, the occasional exception. So yeah, we, I think we hope exceptions like this will be very rare, but it's expected that we have a few of them.
Yeah, and I think that especially goes for a legacy event like this. It's put on by a local, local organization and it, and it funds scholarships as well for, for families of the Fallen Peace Officers. Thanks, Kevin.
I'll be voting against this. My biggest issue here is that when we're evaluating them, like in our new process, we looked at the whole month of April and May and March and tried to decide how, what's our capacity? How many events can we hold that are motorized? And if this had been in that intent to apply, I feel like we might have denied a different event at the same time, so. Well, cheers to the future event process. I think it's gonna work a lot better.
Thanks, Sarah. That is a valid point.
I move to approve the Fallen Peace Officer Trail Ride 2023 Special Event Intent to Apply.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? Josie.
I, I think Sarah's point is very valid and I, I will be voting to approve this intent to apply because I, this isn't kind of where I want to make that stand. But I, I do really agree with what Sarah said as a sort of testament that I think our new process is going to have a much more holistic approach in general, because this is a very good example of seeing something without a larger context and not being able to see, oh, there's four other motorized events that week or things like that. So I do really look forward to the new special events process, sort of creating that ability.
Yeah, looking at things holistically. Yeah. Thank you.
To have things followed, you know, this year, I think we should be very firm once this is established that no. You know, and it's always hard. We know how hard it is to say no. So, but I think once it's established and people understand the process, then it's, it's on us to do it.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion on the table to approve the event. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All opposed. Motion passes five to two with Commissioners Clapper and Stock in opposition. All right, we're on to agenda item nine, Letter to the BLM Regarding Takeoff and Landing in Grand County, Kevin Walker.
Yeah, so this is the follow-up to the discussion we had at the previous meeting. And toward, toward the end of that, we decided that, you know, to sort of back off the, the changes that we're proposing to make to, to our local ordinances and instead encourage the BLM to, to take this on. The letter kind of lays out our, our reasons for asking the BLM to do this. I, I do know that the BLM has been in the early stages of some, something along the lines of what we're asking them to do, but there's questions about the scope. Either the, the timing, how soon they're gonna do it, and then how large of an area that they're gonna look at. So, so again, this is sort of not taking, you know, not taking a position on exactly how this issue should be managed, but just saying that there are, there are problems that we think that we think need to be dealt with and that we think the BLM should be the one to, to take on that decision process.
Right. Thanks, Kevin. Any further discussions or, or question? I think Kevin drafted the letter. Any question to Kevin or?
Excellent letter. Yep. And then there was also a letter from, you know, from the town of Castle Valley in support of that motion, so we appreciate that.
Great. Yes, Sarah.
I move to approve the signing of the, the letter to the BLM regarding the takeoff and landing in Grand County.
Second.
All right, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner McGann. Further discussion. Mary.
Well, I was interested, I, well, I, the difference between us moving and changing our original approach, I think, had a lot to do with the behavior of the people who came to talk to us. I was really impressed with how polite and responsible they were and how they talked, you know, they talked to us. As opposed to when, you know, you almost get in that fight-flight mode when someone comes and starts yelling at you or calling your names or whatever, then you just go, whoa. Fight-flight. And, and I just, I thought that was, you know, because we all went, oh, oh, and really heard. So I just want the people that spoke at that, our last commission meeting to understand, to express my appreciation.
And I saw a couple of folks in the back, raise your hand. So our, at the commission, we don't entertain public discussion on agenda items. We have two citizens to be heard during the course of the meeting, one at four and one at six. We do have a couple other items, so I would expect, actually not much, we're, we'll be kind of pushing it with six o'clock. But I would stick around. If you wanted to make a comment at six o'clock, that would be appropriate.
If we finish, can they make a comment if, if we finish before six?
I think that's, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, I think so too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. And I feel like I would want to add too, and I won't be around for this process, but there have definitely been people in the aviation community that have reached out to us to further engage on this process. And by no means do I feel like this letter precludes that or replaces that potential. I see it as being kind of in, in addition to that. So that is, that's my hope that this is gathering all of the stakeholders together who should be gathered and have a better approach on this moving forward.
Great. Thanks, Josie. Any other discussion?
I would say to, to piggyback on that, I, I really see this letter as a way to kind of punt to a degree. I think that it's appropriate for land managers to make land managing decisions. And I think that, you know, they have professionals for mapping exercises, community involvement, input, alternative plans and the like. I do believe that there's areas in Grand County that are appropriate for landings besides just the airstrips. And I think that it's better in the hands of the BLM than a broad sweeping stroke from us.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, that, that's definitely the intent of the letter is to punt, as you put it, to, you know, gives, you know, I think our first choice is that the BLM deal with this. But I think there is a very real possibility that they won't, either because of staffing shortages or things. So I, I think in a few, a few months from now, we might be asking ourselves, okay, given that the BLM is not gonna act, you know, do we want to do anything as a county? But that, that's a discussion for later. This, this letter is just sort of urging the BLM to, to do something.
All right, anyone else have a comment? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. A motion on the table by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner McGann. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously.
For future consideration, I'm wondering if we don't hear anything and it doesn't look like our local BLM can move forward, but it might be worth approaching the state BLM. Do you think that would be a good idea or not?
Yeah, no, I, I think they, I, I think that could be a good idea about this. And probably, there's probably a few other issues where we think the state isn't sending enough resources to the local BLMs.
Yeah, and David, he's still just acting, correct?
Yeah, I think they're gonna have the new area manager. I think that's gonna be announced sometime very, within a week, but I, I haven't heard of who the permanent person will be.
All right, thanks. All right, we are on to our consent agenda. And let's see, I believe there's a question with a couple of the items there. Items. Yeah, right, items eleven and twelve, correct, Mallory?
Or we just have to remove that?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. I would move to table or postpone item eleven and twelve until our first meeting in January.
Great, thanks, Evan. Motion by Commissioner Clapper. Second by Commissioner Walker. Discussion.
Those items regard appointments to boards and it's not the end of the year yet, so that should be handled next year.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and I think we have an explicit policy that says that.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion of removing these two items and postponing them until our next meeting, raise your hand. Okay, passes unanimously. So we are on to the remainder of our consent agenda. Item thirteen, approving revised one Utah Universal Opioid Settlement Memorandum of Understanding. Item fourteen, approving first extension to independent contractor agreement with NES Incorporated for lobbying surface purposes, services. Item fifteen, ratifying rock stockpile staging agreement with the City of Moab for the Pat Creek Emergency Watershed Protection Project. And item sixteen, participating agreement with the US Forest Service and associated partners at the Moab Information Center.
Move to accept the consent agenda item as read.
Thanks, Mary.
I'll second.
All right, thank Evan Beech for that. Kevin, so I have a, a motion to approve by Mary and a second by Evan. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Or actually discussion on any of the consent agenda items before I do that. Actually, isn't that, we're not supposed to discuss them, right? The consent agenda? Right, okay.
That's what they're saying.
Motion to approve or, or vote to approve. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously, seven to nothing. We are at the end of our agenda on our regular meeting. It's not yet six o'clock. So there are a few folks in the audience who it looks like would like to be heard, so I would open up the table at this point. Yeah, come forward. I'll give you three minutes to speak. I would ask you to come forward, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you very much for hearing me. My name's Mark Rickert. I'm a homeowner, I'm an aviator and a full-time resident here in Grand County. I'm a little disappointed that you didn't let me speak before you voted on this action item number nine, the letter to the BLM, because I, I strongly oppose you sending this letter. After being at the last meeting and hearing the reasoning for the commission to want to send the letter, I, I still have concerns. I've yet to see any data about the complaints. Do we get like five hundred complaints a month from one person or ten complaints from ten people? Every month? Like, like, I'm concerned about restricting our freedoms on public land just because of one squeaky wheel. And sending this letter to the BLM to make a decision about it is premature and the public act, until the public actually sees some data about this, about all these noise complaints. At the previous meeting, a gentleman here spoke about the raptor nests and how they could be disturbed by the low-flying aircraft. And that's actually the first time I'd actually heard of this concern. And I completely support working with BLM biologists to identify potential, like, seasonal closures for particular areas. And as a local, I'm equipped to help disseminate that information to visiting pilots as well. Speaking of visiting pilots, as you probably realize, you have a picture of the aerial view of Grand County behind you. This is a beautiful place and lots of visiting pilots from around the world come here to fly. They take off from straight empty roads and fly away. But now, if, if, if any of this restrictions go through, once they land, they would, they, they might be getting a fine or even getting arrested for taking off and landing on BLM grounds where everywhere else in Utah that's allowed. And I have another concern about the nineteen ninety-four commercial restrictions as a model for this. I don't think it's valid. I support commercial flight restrictions. But mixing commercial and private aircrafts in the same space can be a recipe for disaster, so we need to keep these lands open for private aviators to actually use. Grand County encompasses almost thirty-seven hundred square miles of the most beautiful land in the country. I'm pretty amazed that this commission wants to restrict my ability to launch my paramotor and go explore Seago Canyon or behind the rocks or Gemini Bridges because of the complaints of one specific area of the county. By sending this letter to the BLM, I believe this commission is seeking to destroy the spirit of adventure and exploration in Grand County by further restricting the ways some of us choose to access the inaccessible and unexplored. I would have asked you to vote no, but you've already voted because asking the federal government to make a decision that could have such wide-reaching consequences the recently announced Temporary Committee on Reducing Land Use Noise Even Meets. So I'm glad to see that that was, was formed and that you're taking steps to get the community and the actual stakeholders involved. But I think that should be done before sending a letter to the BLM. I don't think involving the federal government in our lives any more than they already need to be is a good idea, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Three minutes.
Perfect. Would someone else like to come forward and be heard at this point? Come, yeah, go ahead.
Ian McCher, I'm a homeowner of Moab. Year sixty-three thirteen, I was also at the meeting two weeks ago when we had a standing room meeting here and about set the cable on Zoom. I want to kind of start off by kind of saying thanks to a couple of commissioners. Commissioner Emily, you mentioned that was over four hundred emails have been received and that there's a lot more to learn about this issue before proceeding with any actions. Those are your exact words. Commissioner Hadeen mentioned that we should look through their records and find all the organizations and individuals that were commenting and flying in here. And I hope that's being done. Commissioner Boggs just mentioned that there are some actions being done, but again, this action is already going forward without that input. I also really respected Commissioner Clapper's vote to strike this from the docket as it seems to be outside the purview of this county and not well thought out. Heard the words of Commissioner Walker there in terms of how the ordinance was gonna be played out. But I felt like the general consensus from that last meeting is that the aviation community really wanted to work with everyone around, you know, as Mark just mentioned. I had never heard about, you know, where the Raptors are. As a climber, I respect the rules down in New England, not to, not to go near Raptors when they're, and I would certainly respect that as a pilot around here. But there's no information coming out from this commission. But the aviation community does want to work with everyone to make it an enjoyable experience for everyone here in in Grand County. So with this action of sending this letter to the BLM, I think it's just, just another very aggressive exercise committee to restrict the rights of citizens that are trying to enjoy the land. And yes, some of us enjoy public land differently than how some of you guys want to. And we are entitled to enjoy it that way, like even though you are entitled to enjoy it the way you want to. And we can all work together, I think. So there's a couple of points. Maybe I'll, do I have one more minute? Okay, so the FAA is the organization.
The chair, the chair's-
Yeah, you're, you're good.
Yeah, the chair's decision, not mine. I'm just holding up the signs.
So the FAA is the organization that should be handling this. And I don't understand why in this letter it says you're not aware of any cases where they have been able to have an impact on noise. They do. They've closed airports because of noise. So I don't think this commission is taking it seriously in terms of contacting the red groups, both the FAA and organizations. And I also don't think that the nineteen ninety-four ordinance can be really applied here. That's a commercial ordinance. Your specific private land use. And that's a totally different thing than banning essentially all citizens that enjoy small aircraft aviation in public lands. So I think that's just a wide stretch. And again, the aggressive nature of this and how fast it's moving, there have been even requests for these noise complaints. And it's, it's happening so fast that we're, we're not even able to receive those requests or that data yet to make, you know, even some educated moves on, on how to educate our populace in terms of avoiding certain areas. That's how fast this commission is moving to make, you know, really extreme actions against citizens of this area and a lot of visiting pilots. So I would have voted that you not send this letter to the BLM, but it's already passed, so those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Anyone else in here care to come forward to make a comment? Anyone on Zoom? We can, we can open it up to Zoom as well. If you're on, there is a hand raised, Roy Evans, it looks like.
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
I can hear you perfectly.
Excellent. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you all again. And again, as the president of the Utah Backcountry Pilots Association, we're truly looking forward for the opportunity to work with the county to address the concerns of your constituents while making sure that recreational aviation is still something that people can enjoy. And I appreciate the comments that have been shared earlier. Through our request with the county auditor, we've received that data from the county specific to these aircraft noise complaints. And from our analysis of the data, it doesn't warrant this much of a quick decisive action that happened at the last meeting. And then again, with this letter as well, and again, talking past the letter being voted in. There were 47 complaints or comments made in the last two years, which is less than two per month. And those are written complaints in addition to the verbal complaints that a few of the commission members had shared with us through our requests as well. And most of them revolved around helicopter operations and paramotors. And many of them were in relation to questions on where they can operate, when they can operate, and a general lack of knowledge of what their operations are and possibly taking things out of context. Like was said earlier in the commission meeting today, you want, the commission wants to look at things holistically and they want to use real data to substantiate their actions. And those are your words, and we're really looking forward for the opportunity to, to be a part of that as well. Again, like we said, the data that we received doesn't substantiate as much of an action as I think the commission's taking. And the community is standing by and we're ready. And like I said, we're willing and able, and we'd love to come help with the community, address the concerns of the constituents, address the noise complaints. Again, a lot of them are very vague and don't offer very specific instances of where noise is an issue. But we want to work together and make that happen. And again, thanks again for this opportunity. We appreciate everybody who's shared comments with us on both sides and look forward to working with you soon.
Thank you, Roy. Anyone else on Zoom? You can use the hand raise function. See anyone? Quinn, I don't see the whole entire Zoom.
All right, there's something in the chat there, Quinn. I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, I'd open it up. Anyone else in the chamber care to comment? Anyone last, last call on comment? Sure, Rusty, right? All right.
My name is Rusty Robinson. I spoke at the last meeting, a local resident, also a pilot. And I said it before, I appreciate all y'all's work on this issue. I'm also second the opinions behind me as well as online. Disappointed that the letter went out. It's not reflective of the last meeting where the, where the group spoke up. It's harsh. I've also spoken to the BLM myself. They take your letter serious. And they said that they tried to do what you guys requested, if it's reasonable. So y'all just put a heavy hammer down that doesn't reflect, you know, the, the pushback and the voice that you heard last meeting. It's unfortunate. And then again, if we readdress the issue in the commission in three to four months when it's springtime and everybody's busy and the sun sets at 9:00 P.M., it's gonna be so much easier just to pass this right up underneath the radar. And that would be even more disappointing. But I, as an aviator and a private owner, am super willing to work with people. When I came to this community years ago, people spoke up about my noise online. They'd send me a message and say, hey, tell me where you're located, just reasonably, and I'll avoid that. And I've got other pilots that fly with me and for me. We've mapped out areas on the, on the sectional, avoid these areas or make these phone calls if we're going into these areas, that kind of thing. So it's very symbiotic relationship that we'd like to have. The letter is not of that intent, it feels like. So that's all I've gotta say. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Rusty. All right, last call. Anyone else care to make a comment? Ah, there's someone online. Tyler?
Yeah, hey, can you hear me?
Not very well.
Whoops, sorry. Let me see if I can get a little closer. How's that?
A little bit better.
Okay, sorry. I would just like to express my opinion that I also feel like this letter to the BLM is maybe a little bit heavy-handed. I am a new pilot and I purchased an airplane specifically because I took a tour of Grand County and was so impressed with the landscape that you guys have. And I would be really, I would be saddened if rules came into place that prevented me from enjoying what you guys have to offer. Like, I'm excited to come down and explore that area, that area and, you know, buy fuel from the airports, stop and buy food at the restaurants. I, I hope that we can reconsider the quick and probably excessive action. I, I understand the need to, to address noise complaints, but I, I think maybe this is moving too fast and maybe is leaning just a little too heavily into penalizing people who just want to participate in what Grand County has to offer. So yeah, I, I would just like to enter my opinion that I agree with many of the other participants that this needs to be addressed cautiously and maybe not shoved through. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Appreciate the comment. Anyone else online? Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Keith Macbeth. I've been here for 12 years, living here, 18 years total. I'm a pilot, business owner, second home owner. Forty-seven complaints in two years warrants this. It's kind of silly.
Those were the written complaints.
The written complaints, sure. I mean, how many complaints have you got from ATVs, motorcycles, everything else? By a lot more than that.
A lot.
I don't know if you guys have even talked to these communities, basically the paramotors or helicopters, and asked them to do something different? There's a, I mean, this is blowing up big time on social media. Really, really bad. Looking really bad for Moab. But you could talk to these guys and address the concern, to try to make something happen before you implement all the rules. I don't think so. There's Ian back here, which he pretty much runs the paramotor online. Anybody that comes here goes on Facebook to learn the rules, regulations. Same with helicopters. Sure, there's a big community that everybody can talk to. I think the aviation enthusiasts are probably some of the most respectable people here that respect people the most. I highly doubt motorcycles, mountain bikers, ATVs respect people's noise and privacy the way that these guys are trying to do. I think if you guys actually talk to them and figure out where they fly and what they actually do, you would learn a lot more about how safe and educated they are about Moab and the noise complaints. Yeah, this is my, my two cents on it. I think you guys should do a little bit more research and talk to the communities and try to fix the problem in-house before trying to get the federal government involved. And I think if you guys actually try to talk to these people and gave it a year, you would see a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. All right. It is six o'clock, so there may be folks tuning in for a regular citizens to be heard. So we'll do one last round online. Is, is that all I'm seeing, Quinn, is the folks that are up there? Okay, great. So anyone online, last call for citizens to be heard. You can use the hand raise button. Anyone else in the chambers? This is, this'll be it, and then I'll close the meeting after the, after the comments. All right, it looks like not. So I will adjourn the regular Grand County Commission Meeting of December 20th. Last meeting of the year.